And even though these students are starting out the year virtually, these supplies are very much needed. We then received even more school supplies from Hyundai. They delivered enough supplies for 500 students to the Fuse Building, where they've been distributed to families in need as the school year continues. I also wanted to quickly remind some teachers who gave back to the community. I want to recognize some teachers who gave back to the community. The Dalrayda Elementary kindergarten teachers put together a meal to serve 100 people at Mercy House this summer. And lastly, congratulations to Brutech for achieving 100% senior class participation in the Alabama College Application Campaign. I know that all of our high schools are working hard to help seniors transition to college and to career, and it's nice when they receive some recognition for it. And with that, we're going to move into public comments. Mr. Browder is the first talking about the birthplace of modern civil rights movement. And as you move your way up here, just a reminder that to speak in your public comments, you must make a request in advance in writing to the superintendent's office by 4:30 on the Tuesday preceding the meeting day. Requests must have specified the nature of the business to be taken up with the board and the name of the person who will address the board to be added to the agenda. Communications must be respectful. Discussing specific students or employee matters will not be allowed. Individuals who have concerns that are inappropriate to be discussed, to be solved in this venue are welcome to seek a problem-solving meeting with the superintendent. Immediate feedback by the board may not be provided. However, you may be contacted for follow-up by the superintendent or designated. Public comments may not exceed three minutes. The board chairman has full authority to terminate remarks of any person whose comments contain personal attacks, exceed the time limit, or are otherwise inappropriate. A speaker may be considered disruptive who continues to speak when their allotted time has ended. When asked to stop speaking by the board chairman, it is otherwise inappropriate. And in that, let me just say, I have my timer on, and when you hear a cello sonata, that will mean time is up. And if the person fails to comply when asked to terminate comments, he or she will be escorted to their seat, out of the auditorium, and/or off MPS property, depending on the level of disruption. And with that, I will turn the floor over to Mr. Butler.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Robert Browder, CEO of the Aurelius Browder Foundation, son of civil rights icon Aurelius Browder. I don't know if any of you are familiar with her, but she was the lead plaintiff in the lawsuit, Robert E. Dale. A lawsuit which was probably the most important of all civil rights history, and most importantly to Montgomery, because this is the lawsuit that gave Montgomery his name, the birthplace of modern civil rights movement. Why? Because this lawsuit changed our culture. It dismantled the law, President the First, which supported Jim Crow and those kinds of laws. This is the law that allowed you board members to become board members before they were already in. So, the last time we petitioned for it, we requested two names submitted, Blount and Robert Browder. Aurelius Browder was dismissed because the board did not feel that her contribution had anything to do with education. I beg to give her, and each of you should know, that had not been Robert E. Dale, the education system as we know it today would not be working. Brown v. Board Education, Diana West, Robert E. Dale, and that did so much for Montgomery. And that's why I rise today, since the board has seen its wisdom to change the name of these segregated state-owned schools, Pamela Rockford, Lee Jefferson Davis, and Susan Decker. We feel that it is appropriate that they be replaced, as they were replaced in history in 1956, by the dismemberment of Jim Crow and the segregation law, Robert E. Dale. So I submit those names, specifically Joanne Robinson, who has been written out of history, who was, in fact, the mother of modern civil rights movement, which did not start December 1955, but rather December 1949. Montgomery was more than, what, all efforts to mitigate the circumstances of Citizens Montgomery did not work. It called for a lawsuit. Joanne Robinson was the architect of that lawsuit. Aurelius Browder was the lead plaintiff. There were three other plaintiffs. So I submit the names of those plaintiffs and Joanne Robinson for the renaming of these schools that have been missing.
Thank you, Mr. Browder. Next, we have Ms. Avis, Mama Love Lewis.
I want to talk also about renaming schools. When I called, the person I talked to, I said to her, "Do you know Ms. Carpenter?" She said, "No, I don't know Ms. Carpenter." "I spoke here many years ago, when Ms. Carpenter was on the school board." "I just came back last year, so I don't know if she gone on or still here." But the person I'm going to choose is Harriet Tubman. She's a person that, when you say no greater love, you remember Harriet Tubman. The person that was born into slavery, got her freedom, and kept coming back for others. The person who they placed a bounty on her head, but she kept coming back, and brought so many to freedom. I had a poster. I didn't know I couldn't bring a poster. I paid good money for that poster. But it's God money. But anyway, it's out there. I'll stand, I guess, off the school property or to the edge of it, just in case somebody wants to see it. I don't think I have to tell anybody in here exactly how Harriet Tubman affected all of our lives. Our lives may still be different if it wasn't for Harriet Tubman. And I want to say this. If you have any questions, you can ask me. But I want to say this. My sign out there says, "Please rename Robert E. Lee School for Harriet Tubman or choose her for another school." Some people say, "Why you chose Robert E. Lee?" Because when I came to move back last year, I'm near Robert E. Lee. And I also want to say this. Excuse me. I want to say this. If you don't have Harriet Tubman for Robert E. Lee School, I'm willing to donate $7,000 for a monument to be erected for her. And if that don't pay for it, then I'll be willing to donate more. But I think our children need to know how their parents and grandparents, they need to know about freedom and about Harriet Tubman. And I would like to wait for Dr. Bailey and Abe to erect that monument. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. We have one person signed up for citizens' comments. The same rules apply to public comments as to citizens' comments. Pamela West.
Good evening. I would like to start off by thanking Superintendent Anne Moore and her leadership team. They met with MCA virtually, and we spent about two, three hours discussing questions that educators had, and her and her team did an excellent job trying their best to answer the questions. Of course, there's always some lingering questions. What I would like to share today in the packets that have been passed around, MCA created a building safety readiness survey. In that survey, it shares concerns of teachers and things that were promised that would happen at the start of school. The team put together a great reopening practical guide. However, we found that some of those things have not been implemented. So what we're requesting on behalf of this elected board, in your packet, you have the survey results along with the reopening guidelines that was provided to all faculty members and staff, as well as your elected schools that you assigned. What we're requesting is that each elected board member physically go into their building, and there's a checkoff list such as, "Has PPE and care packages been provided to educators? Are visiting dots displayed and visible in the common areas? Are temperature checks set up in the building and masks being checked? Have the Family Response Act been posted in prominent areas? Are educators' rooms and central areas being sanitized on a daily basis?" These are some things that we're asking you to do to simply visit the schools that you've been elected to serve and complete the checkoff list. You don't necessarily have to return it to us. We would like to know your results, because we have our survey with our findings. But please share it with the superintendent and her leadership team so they can revisit the plan and make sure. The plan speaks perfectly clear what the safety precautions are. The problem we're finding is not trickling down the chain of command. So if you all would do that, we greatly appreciate it. Our educators, we want to teach. As Ms. Claudia mentioned, there's some wonderful things going on. We just want to be able to do it safely. And right now, our rooms are not being sanitized. We have to purchase from our own, bring stuff from home to clean our rooms and so forth. I understand that things are on back order, but please see what you can do. Maybe some of the partners can donate some of those supplies so we can teach safely. We want to do it. The first day was wonderful. At some schools, difficult at others. But we really want to engage our students safely. So if you all would please go out and visit your elected sites and do the checkoff. Thank you.
Madam President. After hearing that, I had several people call me and say that they could come speak about renaming schools, and I really honestly didn't have the real intent of totally letting them do it. And some of the things they brought up were some questions that I thought were interesting, that I think we as a board should look into, because we don't technically have a need or a term. Some of the questions were, given the fact that the board has decided to rename schools, is the board taking a fine? Are we soliciting people to help pay the fine? If so, is that legal to solicit funds? Who is the largest donor to these funds? Will we know if, for the sake of being transparent, will we know who the committee is, when the committee meets, and is it really legal to accept outside funds? Who is the largest single donor?
All of this will come to bear, not in this meeting, but in future meetings. We will have the discussion in public. Yep. No, good question. I want to just, I can't really see out there, but I understand Commissioner Sankey is with us tonight, and I wanted to recognize him. Good to see you. Thank you for being here. Is there anybody else, elected official here, that I don't see? We appreciate your being here tonight. We're moving into receive as information, and we're going to start with Ms. Katrina Jackson and the Special Education Virtual Plan.
Good evening. Superintendent Moore, I'm the chairperson and board member. Thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak on what we have developed for our special education students. I will have a co-teacher tonight, Ms. Miguel Lawrence, chief, our student and chief coordinator. But first, I want to recognize the Special Education staff that have come to support us legally and efficiently.
Good evening. The Special Education Student Distance Learning Plan was created to provide a common and clear focus for key stakeholders based on a fundamental belief that all students can learn and improve. We believe that one prescription for academic success lies largely in living the core values associated with vision. Lord, yes, it says that when you know your values, decisions are not hard to make. So as a department, we've incorporated the district's core values to create an unwavering philosophy that informs our decisions and the actions directly related to the students that we serve. We employ those values in our daily work, ensuring that students are engaged, educated, and inspired to succeed. Our plan outlines our commitment to achievement, and that all special education personnel are asked to encourage their students to do their best and be more than they think possible. We seek excellence in all that we do for the students that we serve. As well, achievement, I'm sorry, integrity and accountability are really emphasized. We recognize that we are accountable to one another, our students, their families, and the community, to do our absolute best all of the time. Educational equity, vital. We value our students and serve as their advocates. We ensure that we meet the needs of them, and this plan specifically says that all the needs of our students will be met. In short, this plan communicates our desire for MPS students to continue to move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. You have in your package, the Special Education Distance Learning Plan for our district, and the first section of that plan discusses a communication piece, a communication that special education teachers and related service providers will have with the parents and guardians of students with special needs. That connection is really important, and I have stressed to the teachers and the related service personnel that they have to communicate regularly with those parents and guardians to ensure that they understand the processes that we put in place, and also to be able to ask questions if they have any. After connecting with the families, the special education case managers and related service providers, they'll schedule services, and a copy of that, those services will become a part of that student's special education file. Communication practices is something that we really stress with our teachers, and we want that communication to be two-way. We want special education case managers to provide an environment. I heard one board member speak about how good the classroom looked when she visited the school. And also, Superintendent Moore this morning in our cabin, we talked about her walkroom and how engaging the atmosphere was. And we want our teachers to do the same, so that when they are on the virtual platform with the students, the students will feel more like they're in the classroom. On the next page, we have instructional values. Each of the case managers will ensure that the Student's Distance Learning Plan includes a plan for service delivery, frequency, duration, and mode. This includes any related services that are necessary, whether it be physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy. Specifically, the case managers will create individualized instructional lessons and videos based on students' IEDs. They will post activities using designated learning management systems, the distance school G, review the students' progress with online learning, provide informative feedback, and collaborate with related service personnel as well as general education teachers. We also wanted to include in this plan best practices that demonstrate instructional balance in learning. We want them to ensure that those plans are individualized, that they communicate regularly with the teachers, as well as with the parents and students, that they plan ahead of any of their teleconferences for the day of record, that they include documentation, and that is a piece that we have embedded, that accountability piece, because we want this plan to be followed to fidelity. And we want them to also be reasonable and understand that with the constraints that we have with the virtual learning, that all the activities that they may have been able to do inside classrooms will have to be tailored to their virtual platforms. On the next page is a description of what the Distance Learning Plan should include. And then the following page has an example of the Special Education Distance Learning Plan. Each student with a special needs will have this learning plan to come apart with their record. On the next section is that accountability piece that I spoke of. The Continuous Learning Law, this is a law that each case manager and related service personnel will complete and have to submit weekly to their zone coordinator. We will also, as the Department of Special Education, do call-in scans just to do check-ins, make sure everything is going well, because we do want this plan to be carried out. We included some appendices. The first one is Appendix A, our behavior services. We do have students who have difficulty with behaviors, and those behaviors sometimes also manifest at home. So we want to provide support for the parents dealing with students who have behavior issues and being able to provide the social skills training for their students while they're at home and preparing them to come back to school. Appendix B, this portion outlines how we will serve our students who are in self-contained classrooms. They too will be using SchoolG, and we will be going through that, and it's aligned with the Alabama Achievement Standards. Speech and language therapy will also be provided, teletherapy on virtual platforms. And then Appendix D details our preschool services. Many people don't know that our preschool itinerary teachers, they serve students out in the community generally in about 44 different dayhares, preschool headstarts, where they provide the one-on-one instruction that students need to prepare them to come when they are entering kindergarten. They serve the three and four-year-olds, so we need to have a plan for them as well. Appendix E discusses our deficit services and how they will be provided. Again, they will also be using the virtual format SchoolG, Google Meet, and Zoom, or any other group format. And they will be conducting their second-grade child find activities virtually as well. Many questions were asked about, "What about the parent professionals? What about the special education aides?" And definitely, they are a vital, vital component of the success of our students, and we have a plan outlined for them as well. The special education care professionals, they will participate in the one-on-one or live group sessions with the special education case manager. They will be responsible for providing that instructional support in small groups and one-on-one remediation to the students. They're going to support the virtual instruction of students assigned, and they're also going to help the teacher prepare the assignments, the content, and the activities. And we have designated specific duties for the self-contained care professionals, the ones who are one-on-one with the students, the included care professionals, and again, our care professionals who work in the behavioral classrooms. American Sign Language interpreters, we do have a population of students who have, who are deaf and have to use an interpreter. Those interpreters will also be assigned to SchoolG in the classroom that their students have on their schedule, and they're also going to provide assigned language service to them as their teacher is providing instructions. Ms. Lawrence is going to speak about the co-teaching plan for virtual learning.
You mentioned that students with disabilities are general education students first. The expectation really is that general education teachers and special education teachers work together to ensure that students truly access the curriculum for improved student outcomes. We have several resources outlined in the guide that support the effort. We adapted the models so that they can be utilized virtually in the virtual platform. We have virtual co-teaching agreements and a plan whereby our teachers will work together to plan lessons for all students to get this up in the classroom and upload them through SchoolG. At the end of every day, we all, the entire district, online, try to master SchoolG, and it's been exciting. We are anxious, but it's still exciting. A little frustration, a little bit of, "Oh, not how we're going to get this," but yet still excited. And many of our special education teachers are excited to be candidates and co-teachers in the classroom, working alongside the general education teachers.
Excuse me, I have a question. If there, I'm just looking at your, you know, really the first page where it talks about your one-on-one meetings with the kids. Is there not anywhere we can, for the special ed, because you said you're using Zoom, that we can't have special ed teachers, you know, for, you know, two days a week, do a group tutoring session for the special ed kids?
Oh, yeah. The instruction is not just going to be one-on-one. That initial communication with the parents to find out what their schedules would be like and when they would provide that intervention. But they will be doing small groups and a separate chat on SchoolG as well. So it's not all just for one.
Right. Just a suggestion, because I know at South North East, we have what they call the Facilitating Instructor. And it covers, I bet, every what they call the facilitated instructors, and it covers every university, which to me, the same concept could go right here or down there. You could cover, you know, your elementary schools, your middle schools, your high schools, and have a schedule that the parents could dial into Zoom or whatever at seven o'clock at night, you know what I'm saying, have them consider something like that.
I'm glad you brought that up. We are, in fact, wanting to be doing pre-recorded lessons as well. That's why the communication piece is in finding out the parents' schedule for when they would be able to work with the students, so we will have pre-recorded lessons as well. Are there any additional questions?
Uh, yes, I do have a few. Uh, and let, I'll take this off. This was one of the hardest, uh, I know this is probably one of the hardest ones to plan for. I kept up with what the federal government was doing and the different waivers that would need to be done, and I would just say these parents are really going to have to get, be patient as this rolls out. But I did have a few questions, and I was going to really reserve them until you all were absolutely finished, so if you still have more, I can, okay. One of the things I wanted to ask was about the AAA standards. Has the State Department really put something together so that that can be utilized in School G for those special ed teachers that are teaching in self-contained units?
Yes, we actually are very familiar with the contact person at the State Department who is handling the AAA, because she is a former special ed teacher in our district, and so she gives uploading those alternate standards to School G so that our self-contained teachers can access it.
And as far as the students, do they, do all of our students, special education students have the devices they need, be it computers, Wi-Fi access, and assistive technology if needed?
Yes, we have made sure that all of our students have communication devices, whether it be laptops or Chromebooks. We have some additional devices on board, and then we also have assistive technology devices that our two IEP coordinators have been distributing this week.
And the various forms that were mentioned for the stu, the teachers, excuse me, to document on, will, is that something that's necessary? Is that like a state requirement, MPS requirement, because it, it just looked like it was double duty for them, because I know it's already in the computer, the IEP is, so do they have to keep a written documentation in addition to the one that's electronically online, or how?
Yes, they do have to submit the continuous learning plan. They're going to upload it in a classroom that is created for them for that purpose, because even though the IEPs are on webshop sets, we are creating service delivery plans for direct service versions, so they may be a little different than what is on the IEP, so we want to make sure that we're capturing everything that the teachers are doing and that they have that documentation to support their, the students' learning.
And as far as time, will they have enough time to get this done, because I know that's a lot, depending on how many people on your caseload?
Yeah, I, I believe they will have enough time. They, they need to have their schedules be flexible, and they will have, especially in this timeframe that they will be online virtually, they will have time to do their documentation and upload those. And we're always there as a resource and support for them down at Central Office to make sure that we can answer any questions for them. They have been calling, they have been coming by, so we're trying to be as supportive as possible of the teachers to ensure that they have everything they need.
And in professional development, I know that, that there were some concerns about that, that I heard from teachers and specifically special education teachers. Have they acquired enough professional development to actually implement the collaborative teaching online? And do they have the resources available, whether they're teaching, co-teaching, English or history or science or what have you? Do they also have those resources at hand to use to effectively do collaborative teaching?
Yes, they do, and in addition to the training that they receive when they first came back last week, every day this week from 12:00 to 3:30, there is professional development on the use of School G. In addition to that, there are going to be pull-out sessions for special ed teachers. Debbie Cook, the PD Director, has indicated that if there's something specific that we need to include or incorporate in that training for special education teachers, we have autonomy to do that as well. So we're going to be here to support the teachers and make sure that they understand what they're supposed to do, and they're not going to give a slip on the wrist if they don't get it right the first time. We understand that this is a work in progress, and we're here to help.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from the Booker T. Washington presentation from JMRH Plus Architects.
And we'll be presenting the slides from the packet that you received with pictures from the rendering, so that'll be what's on the screen in front of you here for the audience. Okay, very good. Thank you, Chad. I am Tim Holmes, one of the principal partners of JMRH Architecture. I have with me this evening Mike Rutland, who's the, one of the other principal partners, and we are thrilled to death to be involved in this project for a very, very excited faculty and student base at Booker T. Washington. It's been quite a process for our firm, and, and when I say process, I can't tell you how helpful the faculty and the MPS staff and all have been in our whole process of putting this project together. We spent, we camped out at Hanville Road for a day and interviewed faculty members, staff members, observed students, spent a good bit of time watching how that school operates, and I can't tell you how beneficial that was to us in the whole process of putting this project together. We're thrilled to be here tonight to give you an update on where we are with, with the actual construction documents and putting the, the project together. Many of you were with us the end of July, I think the 23rd or something like that, when we broke ground on the, on the site of the old Holy Cross School out on Bell Road, and we did that in an effort to speed the construction process long as, as quickly as possible. We were able to put together an early site work package to let contractors begin work while we were still completing our construction documents. So, and where we are right now in the process, we're about 65, 70% through with our documents. They are currently in for review with the State of Alabama Division of Construction Management, Building Commission, if you will, and we're moving on towards a completion that will have us completing documents, bidding the work, and dovetailing the vertical construction right into the process after the site work package is complete. So with that, I just want to walk you through the design a little bit and talk about the, the project. So, next slide, please. So, the, the school is located on Bell Road on the old Holy Cross campus, and to help you understand kind of the, what you see in your packet there, the main building, which contains core curriculum and the magnet arts, the core curriculum piece will be implemented into the old school. We felt like that was the best use of that space. The core curriculum is, is pretty much all classroom space. We're having to make a few little modifications in that existing building in order to add chemistry, biology, and physics laboratories, and those are the major renovations into that existing building. We found that building to be in very good shape and very good condition. It's having some minor finish replacements done in it that will bring it up to a like-new appearance of the new school. Mirroring that, in your packet, which would be kind of to, to your right or kind of to the, to the northeast, is the Magnet Arts Program, and that piece connects to the, to the core curriculum and contains things such as sculpture, photography, band, dance, TV, radio, all the, all the activities is, that are part of the Magnet Arts Program. To the, to the north of that, that you see on your drawing or to the top of the sheet, is the Black Box Theater, which would be, you know, a multipurpose, multi-use theater that can contain activities such as piano resitals, choir performances, right on down to dramatic productions. And all the support spaces that go with that, including scenery shops, costume shops, costume storage, those sorts of things are all contained within that piece. Directly across from that, to the left, is the cafeteria, which is a freestanding building that will support all the students and will have both interior and exterior dining. You see a space there connecting the Black Box Magnet Arts piece and the cafeteria. That's a multipurpose use space, it's a plaza-type space that'll be landscaped, can be used for outside dining, outside tables, but it also can be used for impromptu productions, like maybe a, a small jazz ensemble or, or whatever might happen out on that plaza. And there's a gentle slope there, you see, within that ring that, that makes it a pseudo-empathetic. We didn't make a complete amphitheater out of that because it would involve regrading that entire site, and we didn't want to have to do that, but we do have a gentle slope there that slopes down to that plaza, which can be used for performances and also a combined use for outdoor dining. And then off to the left, you see, in, in your packet, will be the gymnasium, which will handle complete competition athletics as well as physical education activities. So, next slide, please. So as you, as you blow this up a little bit, you start to see the intricate designs. So, we, we've connected the, the old, which is again that piece on, on the left with the piece on the right, with a entrance hall that's, that's basically glass. You can see all the way through it beyond the entrance to the chapel that's currently sitting on the site and will be visible as you walk into the building, all the way through the building, you'll see the chapel and the plaza area in front of the chapel. Again, core curriculum to your left, which is basic classrooms, Magnet Arts to your right, band, dance, TV, radio, sculpture, photography, and those sorts of things, with the Black Box up on the right side and the cafeteria across the plaza. The athletic facility is a standalone building off to the left. So, that's the gist of the basic concept of the design of the layout. Next slide, please. We have some images of what the, what the school will look like. So, from Bell Road, looking at, directly at the front, that center peak you see there with the American flag next to it, that's the entrance we're talking about that will be glass, you'll look all the way through that to the chapel beyond. We took the character of a, a lot of that piece directly from the old school, and we, we mirrored that and matched that on this front piece, but as you rotate around to the Magnet Arts piece, we thought we really need to complement what was there by contradicting what was there with something very modern, very sleek, very, and if you'll go to the next slide, you can see how you wrap around, and what you see there in the first two elements there, that's band and dance studios connected with the bus canopy there, this is the drop-off, and then as you see in the back there, the, the tall piece, the glass piece, is the Black Box Theater where the performances will take place. So that's the view you kind of see coming down Bell Road as if you're coming from Vaughn Road headed toward Troy Highway. So, next slide, please, which rotates on a little further around, and again, this is the, this is the Magnet Arts piece with the Black Box Theater to your right there. As you move to the next slide, please, this is the standalone cafeteria building, which it's, it's all glass looking into the dining area there, and then as you see, it opens up onto that plaza area that I spoke about and provides exterior dining as well as those impromptu performance spaces. And then lastly, I think we have a rendering of what the athletic facility, so next slide, please. The athletic facility takes the combination of the old school, puts it on the front for the concessions, and I think we have a driver's ed and a multipurpose classroom on, on one end of it, and toilets, concessions, pre-function spaces, and then as you get around the corner there, you get into the full-blown gym, workout facilities, locker rooms, and support, support spaces for all those activities. So, so that's the gist of the design, and just wanted to give you an update on where we stand and where we are on the project, and I would be remiss if I didn't say we're not, we're on schedule with our plans, and we anticipate coming out of the ground as the site work package completes in October, coming out of the ground some late October, November at that, at that time. So, there's any questions, I'm happy to entertain those. Sure.
Thank you, and it looks beautiful. What is the maximum capacity for students at the new school?
As is?
No, no, after the renovations.
After the renovations. Oh, we're designing it for 600, and then we have a, a plan for that middle portion to be filled in with another wing if we need to add students.
Would you add how many more students?
Uh, is it 200, I believe, so to, we take it up to like 800? And again, a lot of that depends on what those students and where those students need to be added. Obviously, in a school like this, you're not just adding typical classrooms. Some of these classrooms are odd, odd shapes, like a photography studio or a sculpture studio. They're not your typical school classroom, so it would depend on, you know, maybe what the, what the curriculum is that the, the students are being added for.
Uh, we'll go back a little bit over 400.
It's very exciting. It's going to be a beautiful school.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate all the input of, of, Dr. Starks has been just amazing. We, what a, what a great ambassador for that school, and, and everybody with MPS has just been a huge help to our firm, from logistics to IT to Chad to, to everyone who has, who has really kind of formed our entire team, and we appreciate the board, and we also appreciate Dr. Moore and all she's done, because she's sat in our office many times and gone through the same stuff, so we certainly appreciate it.
I'd like to say something else. Are we, I, I mean, 600 just doesn't still seem like a lot to me when we look at, at the 28,000 kids that we have. Are we planning like, I mean, I, I guess I was thinking that we were moving more towards magnet programs within the school so that all the kids in the system would have exposure and have this, these opportunities that these and have this, these opportunities that these 600 kids have. I'm not trying to be difficult, but at the same time, I know there are, when you limit it like that, then you're limiting some of the other traditional, you know, children that are not able to get into that. So, are we not planning further for more than 600? The other high schools tend to have, you know, are able to accommodate what, a thousand kids maybe or more?
So, when you have a special program designed the way BTW has been designed over the years, where you have specialty programs and it is strictly magnet, the school itself is strictly magnet, and it has lots of ways that you, well, several ways, I should say, where you make a decision about how students get in. So typically, I have said to Chad and those, I would never recommend building a school for 400 kids. So, this school, starting out, will house about 600. Normally, when you build a school, you can always add another 100, depending on how you mix them up, because they're not all going to be in the same place at the same time. So, there's always that possibility to expand. We also have to look at how we generate teacher units so that, over time, the number of students will actually dictate how many teachers you have or vice versa. So, over time, we have to gradually figure out, do we need to add more teachers with local units so that we can have more kids in the program? And it's a sort of every-year thing, and you gradually build on it so that if you can afford local units, then you start to add, and that would be to any program. But then, secondly, yes, we are looking at, and this year actually, we're starting with Carver Elementary, where even though some children are coming in as magnet students, many of the programs will be also offered to the children who are there as a part of zoning or the traditional program. So, over time, yes, we are planning on ways to make this work so that those attractors are available for more than just students who aren't magnet students per se, even if they're in a more traditional school.
I would think that the fact that we're doubling in numbers is a pretty awesome thing that we should just be happy about at this point.
Double point, yes.
We're going from 400 to 800.
Six.
Four, no, he said 600, then 800. So, you're doubling it. So, you should already look at the growth. To me, I'm excited for that. You know, I think, I agree that we need, you know, these same type programs in our other schools, but, you know, where are we getting our money? Okay? I mean, we're doing good, we're using the insurance money that we have, so I just, I guess I didn't understand.
I understand that. I just, I look at the number of children that we have in the system and how the magnet program or magnet schools, because they're not really programs within the traditional schools, I look at the children who are not being able to be exposed to that. But, you know, I mean, I am happy about it too, and certainly, the magnet schools are a shining light in our community, but it does not represent the other kids. And I think it's great for a black box theater and for concessions at the athletic center and this glass cafeteria. I think that is wonderful. But I also look at the students who are at Leneer who don't have that. And, you know, I get all about the insurance and all of that, I understand, but I just wanted to ask if we were looking at how we're going to let those kids have the same opportunities?
And I think they do, and I think if you have a point for that, you should come up with it and tell us about it.
So, remember.
I don't complain for it, I'm asking questions.
Ladies, remember, if we get the ad valorem passed, we'll be able to do more with the arts and music and the higher-level sciences and math, all those things that we want to do in the other schools for the other children. With that ad valorem increase, we will be able to incorporate more of those kinds of programs into our more traditional schools. And then, also, remember, the BTW is probably the oldest building before the five. It's probably the oldest building in the system because it's been around a long, long time. So, even if we did not have a five, but we're just looking at how old the building is, that that would probably be one of the ones that would be at the top of the list for replacement. And anytime you replace a building, an old, old building, you try to do more of the modern things too. So, as we look at buildings, maybe consolidating, putting other buildings together, maybe have, hopefully, we can build a few more booths consolidated, then we can do more of the more modern-type things that you see now in this plan for BTW.
And I'm not, I'm really not trying to be difficult. Well, I think it was built by 2029, so I believe it's probably the oldest in the system. And I just have one more question.
The building that burned is older.
Pardon me?
The building that burned is older.
Oh, okay. The White House Street, I'm sorry about that. Is there a waiting list at BTW and at Lampar BTW? Do we still have waiting lists?
I don't believe we have a waiting list this year at Lampar BTW. We have done the lottery piece, but over time, as we get ready to get into this new building, we will do more to encourage people to apply for the magnet program, and we will do more to have the teachers available to be able to accommodate additional students. So, if you're at BTW right now and you only have 400 kids, you're only going to earn enough teachers for about 400 kids. If we gradually increase the numbers, we will have to probably put in some local units, and that would justify, at some point, a larger allocation from the state for those students. Right now, remember, we're operating off of the state allocation. If the referendum passes, then we will be able to put more locally paid units into a school, thereby encouraging more kids to actually accept it because we'll have the teachers also to accommodate them. But I do see us moving toward many more than 400 right now. I don't think that's why it's a building school for 400 kids, not a brand-new school anyway.
Also, you have the, if we, if the referendum passes, we do have the arts in every school, and that's going to feed the program to, feeding kids into the, to the magnets that go there. I mean, not every child that takes art or dance is going to end up wanting to be in the dance program. So, it just, it's going to feed on itself, and I think it's going to grow as it should naturally, organically.
But your point is well-taken. We do understand that, and I do, we need to offer more of these kinds of programs. Most of the time, in a magnet school, it's at a higher level because students are geared towards becoming better and better as a dancer or whatever. But in a regular, traditional school, you can also have dance and music and art so that the children are just introduced in some way to those things and become aware of the benefits of having those kind of programs. So, I do agree with you.
But we do have drama at each of our classrooms.
If we do, we have an English teacher who teaches and maybe gets a supplement for doing the drama piece. It's not quite like it would be at a magnet school. And magnets are designed to be a little bit different from a traditional program, but we can offer some of those same kinds of things to our traditional programs.
Well, Dr. Moore, I want to say, Jenna, I had the same viewpoint that you had about expanding, and Dr. Moore explained it literally the same way, so I got it. But I'm excited that if the ad valorem passes, that we can do more in our traditional schools because realistically, not every child really wants to go to a magnet school. They like their neighborhood schools and want to enjoy the arts at their actual school.
Thank you, Dr. Moore.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for panel over here? Thank you so much. We're excited.
All right. Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate everything the board's done for this project.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
And I asked Dr. Starks to be here just to make a quick comment about the process and what she's gone through so far, so.
You all know I'm OCD, I'm sorry. I want to, first of all, thank Superintendent Moore, our board members, and also the general community who have really worked with us to reach this point, but our architects. I ask that they have, did they have architects on our staff who were artists, because they came in and they asked the questions that artists would ask. And this is my 17th year as principal of BTW, and the three times we had individuals come over to the school, no one ever really talked about the arts, so I want to thank them. I want to thank our teachers and our staff who were very active in this process. I want to thank Mr. Anderson, as well as our fame board. We have Jean Charbonneau, she is our president. She's here and our PTSA. And I just want to share this quick story because I am a Leneer High School alumna. I was at this school 22 years ago, and I sat in the principal's office. He was preparing to hire me to teach at Carver, and I was ready to accept that position. And he said, "You also have an offer at Booker T. Washington, and your purpose is over there, so I'm going to release you from Carver High School." And I didn't understand because I wanted to work here. But whenever we saw the vision come to fruition after being in that building so many years, the only thing I could think about, August 18th, was that no child was in that building when it burned because it was ready to fall down any day. So, I am thankful for this moment, and I am thankful for these architects, and I'm thankful for everybody who made this possible. It's not about politics, but it is about allowing BTW to serve more students. We host thousands of students each year at showcase, and we want to continue to serve those children. And I do want to take this privilege, I thank the architects and Chad Anderson and everyone, to thank our MPS nurses. I'm wearing my shield today because of my nurse, she told me I needed to get one. Our security staff, our logistics and maintenance department for what they've been doing to assist us during this pandemic, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I appreciate you all.
Thank you, Dr. Starks.
And I'm going to move through mine fairly quickly. Feel free to stop me if you have any questions. Looking at the spreadsheet, going through the operations update, the Brewbaker Middle Roof is roughly 80% complete, and you see the attachment there. Peter Crump, that should be 40%. My apologies on that. We're moving pretty quickly on that. The rain this week may hold us up from finishing our final date on it, but we will move as quickly as we can. The biggest thing there was there was some stuff that had to be peeled back in the classrooms and replaced due to the damage over the years from the water. So, that part of it slowed it down a little bit. That's not a very, a big roof, so the system, the membrane system that'll go there will go very quickly. The Seth Johnson roof replacement, you do have the contract, that update. I turned this in prior to getting that contract, and we were fortunate enough to get that on here. The Union Street Elevator Project is, we're waiting on the Building Commission. We've been waiting for a little over six weeks on that. That's another thing that's concerning going into this project with BTW. I was talking to Tim before I came over, and that master, that master document that they sent over is over 300 pages in that, in that plan that they have to review. That's much greater than an elevator, so we plan on meeting with the Building Commission as we get closer to that date to try to help them understand we need to expedite that as quickly as they can and safely as they can and meet the deadlines we have with the insurance money, because we really would love to be in that building next year at the start of the school year. The JD HVAC replacement, there are five phases to that project. It is a year-long project, and we're well underway in it. The largest part of it was phases one and two. That is now complete, and we will do the final inspection on those rooms on August the 17th, which the teachers are currently in, and we got released from the Building Commission to do so on that as well. The intercom upgrades are moving fairly quickly, not as quickly as I would like. We did have a setback with several of our intercoms recently where the electrical storm knocked out several of those. Mr. Watts has been helping us try to expedite those things to get that taken care of. And the BTW site package, if you've been there since we were there, would be groundbreaking, take this down, with the groundbreaking, it's moving very quickly, and you see the sewer and the drainage stuff being put into place and different things there, but it is drastically changing quickly, and I look forward to seeing the vertical construction come as well. The Fitzpatrick paving, that was something that we worked out last year with Dubois Construction. They were doing the Court Street paving for the city, and they asked that if they could use a piece of our property over the old bough and grass, and in return, I asked them, hey, can you pave a parking lot for us on that? So, one of the major ones that we were looking at was Fitzpatrick. It was roughly, when we had it quoted, it was $177,000. It cost us materials-wise about 49 or so to do, plus some paint that we did on our own. So, we saved approximately $120,000 with a deal that we did that, and I think that kind of will tail into the MOU from the agreement with the city that we'll discuss a little bit later. Phase three with the JD HVAC has already begun, and with being virtual, that's going to help us get ahead on some of these projects so that we can have those places set up prior to the students coming in, hopefully sooner rather than later, and safely as possible with that. And we're playing that by ear for the final two phases with four and five that will be coming later, but we're fast and furious on phase three. If you're facing JD, you understand there's three legs to the main building that go off of it. We've completed the left leg, the middle leg, and the gymnasium and the cafeteria, that's one and two. Phase three is the right leg of that main building upstairs and downstairs, and we've begun that process as well. And then, you have the BTW presentation and then the MOU. The Seth Johnson roofing contract, that is the low bid that you received for the contract on that, and you should have seen the bid tabulation along with that document that was in there as well. And then, we have the agreement for the Floyd property, the old Floyd property over there with the city that is up for discussion as well, where we lease that property to them for said services. Just rough estimate, we'll save approximately $6 to $7 million with this lease agreement from my tabulations, rough tabulations of how much it would cost to repave all these parking lots that need to be repaved across the district. So, I think it's a fantastic opportunity and look forward to hearing your comments.
Well, I just want to say Fitzpatrick looks really good. I rode by and saw it, it looks really nice. Very, it just kind of gave it a refreshing feel.
Makes it pop.
Yeah, it does.
And our guys did the painting on that, and they did a fantastic job of doing it.
That is awesome. Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am. I don't forget things. It may take me a little while to get to it and work those deals out, but I know we'd spoken about it last year, and I'm glad we were able to get that one done, but I look forward to getting the rest of them done as well.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to add, Chad and I talk a lot about projects and the fact that we don't have any money. So, we always try to think of creative ways to get things done, and so if someone comes to us and wants something, I try to figure out with Chad how we can get something else done in exchange for what they want. And I always want to be to the benefit of the school system, and so these, some of these projects that you see, especially when you see this MOU, I think you probably have had a chance to read it, will allow us to get a lot of paving done over the next five years for all of our properties, pretty much. And that would be something, I think, we quoted, what, $6 or $7 million?
It's between $6 to $7 million.
It will take, you know, four, five years to get it done. We start with the most difficult ones, the most immediate first, and then we'll move to the others. But over time, we will, you know, all of the potholes and the things that you see at schools now will go away. And so, I think this is a good agreement with the city if they get what they want, and we get what we want, and we, if you all agree to it.
And to piggyback on that with Dr. Moore, she and I dreamed very big about a lot of these properties. I know we mentioned Leneer and some of these other ones, but yes, with the referendum, we had big dreams, don't we, Dr. Moore?
We certainly did.
Mr. Watts tries to bring us back to reality with those things, but we hope the city will get behind it and give us a shot to make Montgomery, you know, back to the top of the heap on what we do educationally.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving along, Ms. Jones, Dave Jones is going to give us an ad valorem update.
Good evening, Dr. Moore, town president, board members. Here's a quick update as I happen to be. At the Montgomery County Board of Education press, on Monday, on the 3rd, 2020, the Montgomery County petition unanimously voted without debate to add a property tax referendum to benefit Montgomeryville Schools to the November 3rd, 2020 presidential ballot. November's vote will be the first time November's vote will be the first time since 1994 that Montgomery County voters have had an opportunity to vote and invest more funds to MPS. Today, like there, on Wednesday, August 7th, MPS Superintendent, Andrea and Roy Moore, and School Board President Claire Will, announced the launch of the Vote for Montgomery Public Schools campaign. Montgomery County Commission Chairman Elton D., City of Montgomery Mayor Stephen Reed, Alabama State Senator David Burkett, and Alabama State Representative Kurt Hatcher, among others, also spoke at the announcement. Mrs. Tania Jones will lead the Vote for Montgomery Public Schools campaign, and Minister Adam Olneyork is advising the sever. The campaign is fundraising through a political action faction committee, excuse me, the Committee to Invest in Montgomery's Future. As of July 31st, 2020, the PAC has raised $38,000, and has a remaining balance of over $29,000. If interested individuals would like to learn more about this campaign, please visit www.educatengn.com. You are accepting donations. If you're interested in signing up again, please visit www.educateengn.com. If you have any questions.
More like a comment, and it has nothing to do, well, a little bit to do with what you were talking about. It would be remiss of me to not thank Dr. Alfred Seawright for donating to Park Cross High School, Jana, that's in your district, yes. Uh huh, and a substantial amount of money to the football team, so I just wanted to kind of put that plug in real quick.
Absolutely. All right, thank you. Thank you, Jade. And Mr. Watts, the night's not complete unless we hear from you.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Moore. It should have the full annual financial statement for the month of June 30th of 2020. Contains into financial statement, the explanation of financial data, which is basically the COO's general overview of the district's financial position. There's also a snapshot analysis, which is just basically that, a snapshot of our financial position. The monthly budget percentages, of course, the month that we're speaking of is June of 2020, which is the ninth month of the fiscal year. Of course, that represents 75% of our fiscal year. So we're kind of heading towards the end of the fiscal year, which ends September 30th of 2020. There's also a monthly, monthly and annual comparative statement of revenues and expenditures that basically compare our revenues and expenses from a monthly basis and an annual basis. There's a statement of cash flow, which basically states our funds received and the funds dispersed as of the, the month of June. There's a pie chart, which is basically the graph of those funds received and dispersed. Also, in the financial statement, our health exhibits, which basically consist of our statement of revenue, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, which is basically an private industry income statement. Also, the combined balance sheet, which speaks to our assets, liabilities, and fund balance. And of course, there's also a definition of accounting terms. If I could just hit just on a couple of points, Madam President, that lays through our, our snapshot. As of June of 2020, our fund balance is at about $35.5 million. June of 2019, or one year ago, we were at about $23.5 million. So we have about a $12 million increase in our fund balance from last year. We are projecting by the end of the fiscal year that we'll have an increase of between $6 to $9 million in our fund balance. So we've done a pretty good job under the circumstances, and we think that we'll continue to do well. Not perfect.
Any questions, Mr. Watts? I'd say that was more than a good one. Thank you. Let's see, Ms. Smith? Are you all ready?
Mm-hmm, we are. This evening, we'll be presenting, well, as you all may or may not remember now because COVID kind of interrupted many things, but I had the pleasure of establishing with the board's approval a Culture and Climate Committee, and we've been working on various things. So today, we'll present to you just an overview of some of the things that we've been working on with more to come. But I told them in our last meeting that I am very proud of the things that I see happening now that are so intentional, that are student-focused, and I do anticipate and expect to see even more great things come out of our district. So without further ado, I have with me this evening Phaedra Foster, who's the co-chair of the Culture and Climate Committee. I have a subcommittee group added to it, and the, and the founder of We Madam Montgomery, Grace Jackson, who is a young lady with us this evening. She lives, she's originally from Montgomery, a student at Tuskegee University, and wanted to just help our students to find their place in our school system. So I'll begin with Phaedra Foster.
Ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Moore, and thank you so much for having me to serve the wonderful committee and to visit you all tonight. I used to have a thought that I told you all the time that I need to decide how to invest within the problem or the route. And so what we decided to do about meeting is that we look at issues, and we are trying to come up with solutions. Our committee includes community members, our students, our parents, teachers, kind of have backgrounds in mental health, social work, law. We've got how to work with the enrollment, the Navy program, and how to work with our program and the public sector to address. So we have people in place who, I think, address what we feel about overall and keep the mission with the leadership. Our work goes from the post and crime survey that was part of the Amane Ed Report. We noted there is a link in progress to climate and past step of the community and student engagement, and that culture is the expectation of high standards and behavior as well as common belief. So as I said, we began with the Amane Ed Report, and we started with a review of the street code conduct as well as breaking laws that are true to the law. What we wanted to see is places where policies might be, need to be changed because it was embedded to the building, permission of the district, but also maybe there are areas that need to strengthen based on what people in the community were saying is what they saw and reached for our system. So as we were going through this review, you know, that last meeting we had to come through, we had a petition dealing with issues in our district, and the question was the district raised about creating a subcommittee to address the issues that were raised. My co-chair, Dave Oden, from the issues that were raised, we see first of all how they tied to policy, and what we found was a lot of the issues that you were raised are a matter of policy. So our people adhering to policy and again, our citizens' policy needs to be strengthened. So with that in mind, we now have two subcommittees that we think will be addressing the two major things that were raised, which was one, the issue of retaliation keeps coming up. And I do want to say that that is not specific to our district. I know when I was in the National PTA Convention a year ago, that's something that can become part of a school climate. We want to make sure that our climate is the best possible, so we're trying to address it. And we think that the subcommittees that Grace is talking about will allow us to address that issue. And the other one is the conversation about diversity and inclusion, and what we're hoping to do is to move this conversation of all, we can have policy, and the man that talks this anti-sunlighting policy, and that is just as important a part, a part of discipline in climate as is rules, as is leadership. And so what we want to do is, and what I think that that, the subcommittee is going to do is to move this conversation toward the way that we started moving the overall conversation toward that, we can build with the line here and the issues. But I think a better way of looking at it now is, you know, diversity is forgiveness, right? If you're not diverse, you're not out of law. Diversity is how it's viewed at the table, and consistency is having a voice, and belonging is having that voice heard, and so that's the cultural promise that we want to establish that we have in Montgomery Public Schools. And so that's kind of what that subcommittee is addressing, and what I love about it is it is our community who loves that of our district that have that special expertise with them, and what the issues have been in our district, and what they're doing, and they're helping us to solve this problem. Grace is going to present it again, and we'll probably come up with a plan that helps us to address issues that are issues with, that are faces we met, that they may feel uncomfortable to come forward and address. And so I would go back to that a little bit, but that is two of the ways that we are dealing with what we're experiencing in the policy. The second thing that we want to address, now we started looking at some of our main themes in, in the core services stream, and everybody keeps bringing up Ad Valorem, which we've been feeling long and longer, but our research is one of the things that we're seeing is that our district is so good, and it is, and there are a lot of needs, and while a lot of people want to point to the central offices and say, they can't, that's not what we think. What we're doing is in this first, to be successful, it's not just combined with a lot of dollars, and if people can win more jobs, there's, there's obviously good to split, and there's more people than jobs that we're doing. So our hope is that as companies develop, and to have more, everybody needs to understand that we need to talk to people in our district that are open for ideas and thought, and so this one, we look at what are some of the issues that we are addressing. Because if one of the outcomes, we've got to start with what we can. And one of the things that we have to take into consideration, and I know a lot of people that go with, I know there is a situation that we've got to get attention, because there are people that are talking, I know, who are, they did point out that we've got the contract with Agent Todd, and I know that that gets kind of bit spicy because laws have lived, we have a few some recommendations, but I know that they can promote their services, right? But we are concerned about whether we can afford social workers in the district, and they've thought of that, there are a lot of things to be, to help pay for their, if students have issues, to give a place to call. We are concerned that we would be right with women rape, if they're in addiction, and there are issues with power being cut off, and that's a impact for the city. So mental health and social work, of course, support services, with everything else that comes up, those are becoming a lot of the fight. There's a lot of issues that other agents, that are working on. If we're working on these areas that have to do with changing our attitude, right, not just within the, the district, but the community, and we want to work on closing the opportunities together, that is coming up a lot when we're talking about working school. The other thing is, yeah, that kind of means that our students are capable of a lot more than people are believing they are to be capable of when they're talking about, talking to the building. And so when I was working with a project out there, I was working on a playwriting project, the first time I ran, this people were always fighting about this stuff called K-pop. I didn't know that it was K-pop music, and they got on the internet, and they made me an entrepreneur. Next time you were, you get funding, they go to out there, it's just, it's just, we felt, I mean, and so when they wanted to have a conversation over, we have, they start speaking to me. Our kids are capable of amazing things, and we need to start growing the weeds out, and how we talk about them. And the other one is that we want to make sure that we're students from, for these schools, if we have to, to partner these schools. I have a document that I'm going to, I'm going to share with you all, because we do have to put all of this in the platform, what we're talking about, but we do want to make sure that, like I said, a school is not a school is where it's, students are on the mountaintop, but that parents feel that they're part of partnerships, which is, if they are, they're embodied to the program, and a lot of times, people want to, for other students, the parents, you know, have a, and.
Thank you, Phaedra. Okay. The next thing is my presentation, so that was on, and then after me, we'll have Grace. She's the youngest, so, and probably has the most patience. The older we get, I think the less patience we have, but I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. So creating a positive culture and climate, as board members, we are not responsible for creating a positive climate in the schools. The responsibility for creating a positive climate and culture falls on the superintendent, the principal, staff, and at each learning site. School board members can use information from data collected through surveys. When done reliably and effective, efficiently, measuring school climate can help improve schools' vital signs and help school boards of education realize their goals and objectives for the system as a whole, and that ties into our core values and our mission statement. So why is culture and climate important? School climate encompasses the social and emotional conditions for learning, teaching, and wellness, experience of safety, support, belonging, connectedness, engagement, academic focus, and individual and cultural respect. There are relationships between the conditions for learning and student attendance, learning, achievement, and graduation, and between climate and teacher attendance, performance, and mobility. Research and practice also suggest that these conditions may be particularly important for students who experience adversity or barriers to learning, as well as schools that are considered to be low performing. What does the learning environment need to look like for students to learn best? Students learn best in an optimal learning environment defined by Sharonoff as a heightened simultaneous experience of concentration, interest, and enjoyment in task at hand. So again, going back to Phaedra's point, getting them to buy in and being their own facilitators, look, finding their talents and gifts, and allowing us to just kind of give them the tools to build and create who they are and who they want to be in life. According to the Center of Disease Control and Prevention, the social and emotional climate at a school can impact students' engagement in school activities, relationships with other students, staff, family, and community, and academic performance. A positive social and emotional school climate is conducive to effective teaching and learning and promotes health, growth, and development by providing a safe and supportive learning environment. And one of the things that we heard just throughout most of our times on the board is school safety and allowing students to have ways to express themselves and be a part of decision-making processes, because we always say the children are our future, so we need to provide opportunities for them to lead. The culture of education, humans are different. Humans are different and diverse. Schools and school districts should acknowledge these differences by creating safe, caring, well-managed, and participatory learning environments that are respectful of diversity and cultural differences. Establish a student-led club or student advisory council to create a safe and welcoming school environment for all you. Incorporate school-wide activities that give students opportunities to learn about diverse cultures and experiences. And my thought was allowing students at some of our most homogeneous schools to interact with schools in our district that are truly diverse, with children who come from different social and economic backgrounds, cultural backgrounds, religion backgrounds, and et cetera. Oftentimes, better schools, better students, better Montgomery. Student voices matter. Oftentimes, decisions are being made without youth input, but listening to young people can assist us in keeping them interested, challenged, and prepared for the next stages of their lives. We have to believe in the capacity of the youth to identify their problems and develop solutions. And the way to do this is by, is by creating opportunities for them to lead. If they feel they are valued and their voices are an important piece of the decision-making, they will stay engaged. And as a result, they will gain trust and build confidence and become adults who speak very positively of our school system and their experiences within it. And at this time, I present to you Grace. She's with We, she's the founder of We Matter Montgomery. And I'll just give you a quick introduction on how I met her. My son and she know each other some kind of way. Maybe not the way mama would want him to know her, but you know, and she was brushing. But I heard her, they had a Zoom call, and I was like, man, who is this young lady? She is on fire. And so they were talking, and she brought up the student council. And I thought, wow, I just listened to and said, you know, this is something that I think we need. And she and I had a conversation, she met with our committee. We are overly impressed by her and just her ability to research. So Grace, just take it away.
Thank you. So today, I'm going to be talking about one of the things we've actually, I'm going to be discussing with the others, what the directors of this council are trying to do to, um, tell the council, but being on the council, we feel, and so also we think it's been, um, many cases of, um, some similarities happening around these students. So this is an introduction, was the purpose of interviewing this council? This is, the memory state we have established in the current public school board of education will allow students to exercise their right of speech in the most direct way possible. The council directly holds their business relationship to advocate for themselves. This board will allow students to echo the reasons of their fears and allow them to directly advocate for themselves in every area of the room. This includes, but it's not limited to climate, resources, building, atmosphere, staff, and culture. Board members will be held upon the guard and media of their schools, as well as in Montgomery, and they're going to be part of the leadership and communication, and they're divided by one another in the board. You can go ahead and work with the next slide. So now I'm going to move into the job description. So the top four policies that we chose are communication, they should be able to listen to and understand, and they should be able to respond, attendance, and compensation. You can go ahead and work with the next slide. So we use safety, security, because what is wrong, elected to, elected to only work, to be able to communicate, not only to talk, but also to receive, because then you can back and forth, and finish alternating or listening, and listening effectively, and listening to, and not responding, because that's next, and your climate, climate, and your understanding of climate. They should be able to listen to the message, and not just the message coming to you, but you can go ahead and work. The next, um, the next job description point is students. They're learning to be a fellow of the community, to, and we will ask, we will provide opportunities for students to, and we're going to, this is all regular, and our next, um, our next request is compensation. We believe that each board member should raise any community service hours for their bravery and heart.
They should be able to receive compensation in community service hours for their bravery while being on the board and the work that it would take to be on the board. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. So the next, the big question is how are we going to select the students that are going to be a part of the council? So we have an application, which will include a video, an essay, short answer, and the selection process will be through We Matter E D M, as we will create a selection committee compromise. I mean, that will include recent, either five years or below graduates of N P S M N I to select and appoint representatives. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. In addition to the one representative, we also believe that two alternates should be chosen, one sophomore and one junior, just in case the senior representative cannot attend. In this case, they will also be working very closely with the senior representative as to, so that when they do come in and the senior can't attend, that they will know exactly what they're coming into and not try to pick up at the last minute. We also believe that freshmen should be appointed to the council in the, in the school, just so that it can continue throughout the years and not be, um, not be a temporary thing, but lasts, and the training will go further and further, and the board will be as effective as possible in the long run. So post-selection preparation, this is the leadership training piece. This will be hosted by We Matter E D M, as I personally, personally believe in members of my organization believe that students learn the best by students. Just a little personal anecdote, I went to a program called TAS, which is Telluride Association Seminar for sophomores. It was held in, at Cornell University in New York. I went up there for two summers, and I thought that I was smart before I went up there. And those kids showed me that there's so much more that could be done by me and by students like me. Another anecdote that kind of made me feel about this board is my friend that I met up there, it's named Jananne. She created a youth board in Minneapolis, Minnesota, and she also got students, um, names changed up there as well. That's who I'm modeling this board after, and I'll be sure to send the paperwork that she sent me to all members of the board. You can go to the next slide. So the goals of this board, which is what we hope to accomplish as a result of this council, I'm just going to say a couple quotes from me and from members of my organization. I said this would give students a direct line to advocate for themselves. Kirk Davis of Lennera Long Class of twenty eighteen said, students will have a voice, use a voice, and share said voices. Danny and Willerson of Blue Tech Along Class of twenty nineteen said, students will now have a voice and matters that affect their daily lives and future. The ultimate goals of this board are a relationship. We believe that this board will create a more clear relationship between board members and students, which will then create a segue into accountability. Board members will be held more accountable with the students affecting students as they will know these students personally and be able to hear these students' voices personally. It will also then create understanding, which will build a greater understanding between the board and students with, with components of empathy and sympathy, as students will get a direct line into how board members work and how the board works. And board members will also get a direct line into how the schools work. It'll also give the students a voice. It will also transmit their leadership skills that will be used for the rest of their lives. And it'll be a great thing to put on their applications going into college. It will also, our biggest goal though, is longevity. We want this board to be not, we don't want it to be temporary. We want it to be established and ran effectively for many years to come. So this is kind of an introduction to the example from our friend Jananne. This is the cover page of the Citywide Student Leadership Board of Minneapolis Public Schools This includes, this includes different, this includes basically what's in my presentation, but in a more formal, more in-depth way. So thank you all for listening, and I'll open for any questions, comments, or anything.
So I have a couple of comments, actually. One, well, this is a question, somewhere if somebody mentioned policies that are in our policy manual, so if you could forward that information to me at some point, so I know which policies you're talking about, because we review policies periodically, several times per year, so we can, you know, pay attention to those policies to see if we need to do anything differently with them. Then also I want to announce, I'd also ask for a young lady, if you'll send me a copy of your presentation?
Yes, please.
And that way I can share it with the board. And then thirdly, in connection with what you talked about, I'm really happy to announce that today we were notified that we received a forty thousand dollar grant to help work with student mental health this school year. And so to say to everybody, everything that we've been getting this year, from careless money to whatever involved a lot of paperwork, so we spent countless hours completing paperwork so we could get whatever is out there possible. And so we, we received an announcement today that we had received a forty thousand dollar grant for mental health. I think it involves having a mental health counselor who kind of works with that, and that's all that that person does, more or less, not just a regular school counselor. That forty thousand will not pay the salary, but we'll figure out a way to, to make it work. So we're really proud of that because we do realize that mental health is an issue that we need to deal with more in our school system.
And our final report is, we will give you like some list of policies that now that we've added these other subcommittees, that's going to be some of what we're going to look at, and then of course, we make the recommendations. Thank you so much, and I'm excited about that coming up.
And thank you all. I guess I can say, we say, I feel the best for last, but I do want to just ask you all to just give Grace just a round of applause. She came from college to be here on a rainy road and some traffic, but it just, it's an example of when you build into the youth, you get to watch them flourish and grow into themselves and speak up for issues that they find that impact and have an effect on them. So thank you all for your time, and thank you ladies for coming out.
Thank you. Great report. Dr. Moore.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to make a few recommendations for your approval. Number one, I would like to recommend approval of the Seth Johnson Roofing Contract.
Dr. Moore, I move that we accept your, I'm sorry, Madam President, I move that we accept Dr. Moore's recommendation to approve the Seth Johnson Roofing Contract.
I second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by hand raising. It's unanimous. Dr. Moore?
I recommend approval of the twenty twenty financial statement. June, I'm sorry, June twenty twenty.
Yes, Madam Chair. I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation for approval of the Golden Corner Corner Financial Statement.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by raising your hand. Passes unanimously. Dr. Moore?
I recommend approval of the Personnel Report Certified Personnel. I'd like for you to just note that number forty-nine and number seventy-six are the same. And I'd also like to ask you to vote by removing number seventy-eight. Take that one out of it. So I now recommend again the approval of the Personnel Report Certified Personnel.
Madam President, I move that we accept the superintendent's report with the appropriate recommendation obtained.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by show of hands. It's unanimous. Dr. Moore?
I recommend approval of the Personnel Report Classified Personnel.
Madam President, I move that we approve the superintendent's recommendation for the Personnel Report Classified Personnel.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All signify by show of hands, please. Unanimous, that carries. Our next meeting will be our September board meeting, and the first of two budget hearings will be on Tuesday, September eighth, at four thirty, followed by a Thursday, Thursday, September eleventh, excuse me, Thursday, September tenth, at four thirty for the second of two budget hearings. And with that, we are adjourned. It is a change. Yes, ma'am.
Four thirty. And then we have our regular board meeting at five o'clock on the Thursday. We'll send you a reminder.